Whenever you're ready, the floor will be yours.
Okay, let's do a quick roll call. Mr. Stenbridge. Mr. Stenbridge, see you. Roll call. All right, Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Ms. Pede Barazza.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Mr. Aitken.
Present.
For George, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going on, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals from the 1 o'clock time frame. Hearing none, we'll go on to case BOA 1582874 with the address of 682 Saratoga Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative who's present. Would they explain to the board, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz with the business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Jumping on to Slide 7, probably a good place to start for context. Madam Chair, members, this is an existing, single-family dwelling that's located in the Orient High section of East Boston, and our proposal involves the demolition of the existing structure and construction of a new five-unit residential dwelling with five off-street parking spaces. If we jump back to Slide 3 briefly. So, as you'll see from the plan, our site is the 50-foot-wide by 100-foot-deep site. It was formally located within the 2F4,000 district, as this board must be well aware by now. There's an amendment to Article 53 that has recently been adopted by the Boston Zoning Commission. This site is now located in the EBR3 sub-district, so there's an entirely set of different regulations that are now applicable, even though this was filed under the previous zoning for the 2F4,000. With respect to this particular site with the new EBR3, up to six units is allowed on a site, provided that you have at least 55 feet of lot width. That was a dimensional change that was added to the amended zoning. However, it's important to point out for the board, in consideration of this application, that there is no minimum lot size that is required in the new EBR3. So based upon that, this lot could be divided into two lots. Each lot could accommodate, provided it meets the dimensional regulations, each lot could accommodate a single, a separate three-family, three-story structure for a total of six units. Interestingly, under the new zoning, however, there is no required parking when you have zero, or one to three units, I should say. So six units with no parking would be the as-of-right scenario. Our proposal is five units in a single building with five off-street parking spaces. I would also point out and stress that this was approved by the Harborview Neighbor Association, which generally is a little adverse to development, but based upon our explanation of what the as-of-right versus the new zoning would allow, they did support this proposal. If we could jump down to Slide 10. So our rendering here shows the proposed building, which is in compliance with the new amended height regulations. It allows up to three stories and 35 feet height. We do have a garage entrance located in front of the building that will pass through to the back to allow for access to the parking area. If we can go to Slide 13. So our proposed site plan shows our building with setbacks on the left at 3 feet, on the right side at 5 feet. You can see that parking access point through the building that brings us to the back. We do show the five parking spaces located to the back portion of the property. Under the new zoning amendment, the limitations are a lot coverage of no more than 60%. We're below that. Our building lot coverage would, could be a lot up to about 3,000 square feet. We're at 2,300 square feet per total coverage. In addition, we're required to provide a 30% curvability, which we have ample space towards the back of the property to include. So those are both in compliance with the new amended zoning. We'll point out that the rear yard setback requirements for the new zoning requires a one-third setback from the rearmost portion of the building. We're at about 34 feet, which would be a little bit more than what's required. We do show some decks off of the left side of that building. Those are uncovered decks and therefore would not count towards the setback, so our setback actually would be in conformity with the proposed zoning amendments, as are the side yard and front yard setbacks as well. Within the new EBR3 district, Madam Chair and the board, there is no FAR limitation. And again, as I mentioned, there is no minimum lot size or lot width that is required, so other than the use itself, which I would say still meets with the spirit and intent of the code, the only relief we would be requiring under the new zoning would be the use for a single building as we do not have the 55-feet width that is required. We would also be in compliance with the parking requirements because over three units, the new zoning would require that you have to have at least one parking space per unit. So with that, I can jump down to the floor plan, particularly to Slide 15, and then answer any questions of the board. So you see our lower level here, which provides an adaptable unit. Then we also include the access for the garage, the garage access through to the rear. We do have space within the garage for traction, recycling, as well as some storage. And then we have two units on both the second and third level. The community asked us to make the modification to allow for three-bedroom units. They asked us to incorporate units that were more accommodating to family sizes, and we agreed to make that adjustment, and we also believe that's one of the reasons why they ended up ultimately supporting this proposal. So with that, Madam Chair, I will stop and answer any questions of the board. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have one question. I was just looking at the parking situation. When the cars pull in, will they be able to turn around in the backyard or they got to back, back out of the garage?
It's a great question, Mr. Langham. There is sufficient space as the lot is 50-feet width. A typical aisle is about 18 to 20 feet in width. These parking spaces would be 20 feet, as you can see here on the plan. So we have about 30 feet available for turning radius, so they would not need to back down to that driveway. That spot that's located closest to the building could back out and then perform sort of a, I guess, a three-point turn or a two-point turn into that garage area. So plenty of room, plenty of room for access.
Okay, thank you.
How many three-bedroom units do you have?
I believe we incorporated two three-bedroom units.
Okay, so typically, they tend to go to families, and I would like to know where is the open space where children can play?
So part of the concern that we typically hear in this neighborhood is the off-street parking. We ideally would have left the rear yard for entire, entire use as open space, but the parking was a chief concern and one of the reasons why, again, as I mentioned, they opted for this proposal as opposed to the as-of-right two-three families that would have open space in the rear. There is a, I will point out, there is a, we have the overview of the slides that will show the context. There's a playground directly across the street from this property and is within close walking distance, East Boston Greenway, as well as the Constitution Beach. So there are recreational opportunities in the immediate vicinity. But as you can see towards the top of the screen where context is, that is a playground located directly across the street.
With that, I have to, I agree with the comment that Ms. Pede Barazza made about the parking in the, in the open space. And I was just checking the map, and there is, the blue line is top, is just two, three blocks away. And with that, I also see that there is a tree on the property. Is that correct? So if you are removing the only tree on the property and you are covering the entire open space with parking pavement, I don't see what is the benefit for the apartments, what is the benefits for the residents?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree on the need for the open space. Many projects, we do propose, we do opt for the open space for the back of the property. This particular neighborhood, I do agree, the blue line is within close walking distance as well. The neighbors felt as if the conclusion of off-street parking was a better option, I guess, for the neighborhood, but certainly willing to listen to what the board's recommendation was on the parking.
What are your on-street parking options? I mean, I see cars on both sides. Are those like residential spaces? Are they open to anyone?
It's, it's a residential space. It is, during the day, it can be a little bit challenging. That's a school, elementary school located directly across the street as well. So it can be a little bit challenging, somewhat congested with off-street parking in this area.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, sure. Madam Chair, I'm going to jump in. I mean, I think there's going to be a lot of things that come up regarding the, the new zoning code, as everyone knows, but I think, you know, it builds off of the comments of Ms. Pede Barazza and Mr. Valencia here, that I understand there's some look at, well, five units and five parking spaces meet some objective, but you could also do three as, two, three unit as-of-right that still have yards and have better design and contextuality with the neighborhood, and there's probably a reason why the EBR3 district was written in such way. So, I mean, I struggle to see kind of the, the need for the variances under the new, under the zoning code for this, and this is a better outcome for the, you know, for the community, given the, you know, this recent passage and all attention being paid to how projects are intended to comply to that unless they have real, real need for, real need for relief due to other unique circumstances.
Madam Chair, I'd just add one thing. I, I don't disagree that the EBR3 does allow for options for dividing a lot and creating separate three-unit buildings. Those would certainly not be, we wouldn't be able to look at three bedrooms based upon the footprint limitations for each of those lots, because we would be still limited to 60% lot coverage. So doing this as a single building also creates some efficiencies that will allow us to add those three bedrooms, unlike if we did those as separate triple deckers as well. Again, trying to respond to comments in the neighborhood, and this particular civic group was very active in the planning East Boston process, and understanding that there, there's not going to be a one-size-fits-all, this one certainly earned their support. I think that's pretty significant based upon a number of cases. I'm grateful for that group.
I mean, I would like to hear Jeff Hampton speak regarding the BPA's recommendation and kind of the feedback of this complete lot being turned to, you know, over your kind of open parking lot.
Mr. Hampton, are you there?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, BPA. As you can see in a couple of our recommendations for today, we, we would recommend to proponents that have these recent appeals before you kind of go back to the drawing board and try to do projects that are in line with the new zoning that was adopted last week, that actually went into effect last week. We understand that these were done prior to the zoning commission adopting the newer Article 53 regulations, but these weren't a surprise. These were out there, and people knew that this was going to be in the EBR3 district. So we recommend denial without prejudice. We prefer to see the audit go back and adhere to the current regulations that are now in effect. Madam Chair, just briefly, and I appreciate Mr. Hampton's comments on this. I will point out, and this is somewhat of a challenge with a number of the projects that were put into motion before the final adoption of zoning, and in this particular case, we did look at this under a prior iteration of the recommendation. 50-foot-wide lots were originally going to be the ones that were allowed to have up to multi-family. There was a very late change in that recommendation to change that to 55 feet. I'm not so certain as to what the purpose or the intent of that is, because, as I said, a 50-foot lot could accommodate two as-of-right three-story buildings, three-family buildings. We're actually proposing one less unit, and I understand the concerns about the parking. But I, I believe we were working sort of along the lines of what the earlier recommendation was when this was planned. The change to add the 5 feet to the lot width, you know, makes this a little bit more of a difficult case because of that. I would submit to the board, you're not going to find many 55-foot wide lots in the districts from which that restriction was imposed. That's a separate conversation we could have, certainly with the BPA and the zoning commission, but this is one of those instances where, you know, we looked at what the recommendation was trending towards, and that's how we designed this. So the change, ultimately to make this 55-foot wide lot, created the, you know, the non-compliance with the planning East Boston amendments.
I mean, I don't have an issue personally with the 50-foot lot. I think it has to do more with kind of the character of the block. So if you look even in front of this image, you have a lot of nice rear, open, green space. And while I do understand that there's a parking, there's a park right across, that's still kind of covered with a non-kind of green surface. It's more of a hard-scape kind of open space. So, you know, you don't really see the topology of kind of a front driveway on the block. You do see a building kind of block. You know, three store, three buildings next to the site, but I am, I'm more concerned with replacing a nice rear, open, green space and replacing that with impermeable surface.
So why don't we open it up to public testimony, and we can circle back?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Colin Ernman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS hosted in a Butters meeting on December 6 of 2023. Feedback on the projects varied. There was someone who expressed their appreciation for the proposed height, feeling it did not overshadow the neighboring homes. Several residents, I believe, asked, they provided feedback seeking more three-bedroom units, which they felt would accommodate families easier and add to the neighborhood. One resident expressed concerns regarding rodents and requested that preventative measures be taken during the construction period to ensure that rodents did not bother other neighbors. A different Butters shared concerns regarding the height of the building, but also asks for the units to be more accommodating for family. As the applicant's reputation mentioned, they went before the Harborview Neighbor Association in January of 2024. The group voted to support with 12 in favor and nine opposed. With that, with the first of the board at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Ernman, was there any feedback regarding parking spaces versus open space?
Unfortunately, the lives on that conducted the public process is out today, so I just have the notes that was provided. It seemed the conversations were focused mostly on the three-bedroom aspect to it.
Okay, thank you. Jessica, any other raised hands?
I have no raised hands. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Okay, Madam Chair, I'm going to try a motion and see what board members think about this. I'm going to recommend approval with a proviso that the project reduce the parking for long five to three parking spaces, especially attention to increasing and improving open space, and we'll be there review.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, I'm hearing no second. Is there a different motion?
I will put forward a motion of denial without prejudice, consistent with the BPA recommendations. I think a lot of my colleagues on the board put it really well for reasons, you know, it's out of context with the neighborhood. I think there's this sort of period where the new Boston is, the new zoning has been recently in place, but I know this project, you know, existed before that, but that being said, I'd like to see more projects before us that more closely comply with minimal variances.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Pede Barazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aitken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1543573 with the address of 61 Marion Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative who's present. Would they explain to the board, please?
Oh, I saw my earlier. Are you confirming any of the arguments for this?
Jessica, you are, you are staticky.
I'm staticky.
You, you are.
I see that he's on the phone. So I'm trying to send him a request to make him appear.
Derek, good afternoon.
Yes, can you just state your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Sam Higazi. I'll be representing for 61 Marion Street, East Boston.
Great, please proceed.
Sure.
Can you proceed?
I'm trying to get control of the...
So you cannot control the slides? You can let, you can let Madam Ambassador know where to, which slides you want her to turn to?
The front elevations below. Right there. Yeah, the one below. This is the existing conditions of the property right there. It's an existing three-family and some space in the basement. As you're looking at it, it has the mansard roof, and height-wise, it matches the building on the right side. It's a little bit shorter than the blue building on the left side. If you look at the back of this line, that is what we are hoping for with the final look. We have added the top floor, the top unit, and the height of this one pretty much lines up with the existing conditions that we have on the left side. On the backside of the building, you see all the, all decks, non-to-code, non-conforming, and diffusory. Yeah, one down, one side down. There you go. If you see on the left side, the conditions there, and what we are proposing is on the right side here. We are proposing also to add space toward the back with a staircase that takes you from the top all the way down to the bottom, where the green space in the backyard that's consists of about 30-foot-deep by the width of a lot. That will be plenty of space for kids, for people to gather, barbecues, and so forth. We also designated with a spot in the back for the trash barrel. Instead of having them in alley between the two buildings, so there will be a space where you roll your barrels to the back and then bring them in on the trash deck. The units inside consist of two bedrooms, bathrooms, open floor plan concept. And by the time it's all, no doubt, there'll be compliance to electrical, plumbing, mechanical, HVAC, new windows, energy code, insulation. Yeah, I need to go through the floor plans. Yeah. Okay, thank you. This is the zoning analysis that we have, and each one consists of what exists and compared to what we are proposing. 3D's reflecting what the look of the structure is on top, in the back. Axymetric views. Yeah, down to the floor plans. Thank you. And as you enter from, as you enter from the street, right here, you come in, go into this space, living room, open kitchen, bathroom, office, or bedroom. And then you go up from the back door into that big open space that's in the back, where the patio is and the back green space. That's on the lower level. You can go to the first floor. Okay, thank you. You come in from the street, on the steps, you enter, you go into your unit to the left side, and anybody living upstairs, you can continue through the staircase going up. Same concept, living room, open kitchen, utilities, closets, bedrooms, whole bathroom, and then the door will take you on a walkway to the back deck. So anybody entering the decks will be either from the back or the backyard or going out from the unit itself. You go up to the upper level. That's the third unit. Same thing, coming through the staircase, open floor plan, bedroom, bedroom, utilities, and out to the back deck. Top floor. Same, different concept is you can come in because of the staircase here, we push them in, so you can have a little private deck toward the front. And here you go in, mechanical open space, mechanical back bedroom privacy toward the back, open space toward the front, and the back decks and the backyard of the building. On board? And this is the top space where you go in from inside the unit, access with the deck.
Okay, are there questions from the board?
Can you mean the project still work without the fourth floor, let's say, kind of penthouse unit, because you have a bedroom up there? Can the project still work without that bedroom unit on the top? Like, what is, what is your, you know, you're requesting a variance, so, you know, why, why do you need this to make your project work?
Well, it gives it more privacy. Well, it gives it more privacy toward the front and the back for the unit that's up on the front.
I think...
And if we do the same thing as what's down next door, we still have to have an access to go up to that roof deck.
Right, but when you're requesting, when you're requesting a variance, you have to list kind of special conditions that deprive you from reasonable use of the property. And it doesn't seem like you have a real use, a real need for requesting that, for us to grant you kind of relief for building height because your, the code requires thirty-five feet as a height limit.
Yeah, but we are within three feet of that. We are at thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, can you, okay, so would you be able to do a project without a violation in height?
Well, we are matching.
What's the height right now of the top, of the top?
Okay, we are matching the building that's on the left side of us, height-wise.
What's your building, what's your floor or ceiling height on the fourth floor?
Existing two floors below, they are nine feet, the ones on the...
No, the top, but your addition.
Eight feet.
Eight feet, okay. All right, I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Mr. Aiken, did you give a question or comment?
Oh, yes, I mean, along the same lines, but the plans also show this is forty feet, so I don't know where the thirty-eight comes from, but the same thing, that this is a thirty-five-foot district.
You reduced it from forty to thirty-eight, is that what you're saying?
And then we sent the plans in, they told us, you can't use them now, we have to go with this presentation. And that's where we are here.
All right, I still think this, the same premise stands. There's some, you know, comments regarding primarily the height, but, you know, I could understand some of the needs around maybe the, the open space and, you know, sort of the lot and regarding the addition on the rear there. I certainly don't, don't understand the, the unique nature of the, of the parcel and the property and the need for the, for the fourth, for the fourth story, for this under the new code.
Okay, are there other questions or comments from the board?
If you can read the BPD's recommendation, that would be helpful, too.
Mr. Hampton? It is Mr. Hampton, but, yep, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of Board, Jeff Hampton, BPD. Would you like me to read it for the record, or do you just want me to summarize?
Summarize.
Again, this is something, as like the previous case, where we believe there's probably a solution to this project. However, it does violate even some of the new zoning. So we are on record to recommend denial without prejudice. We think there can be a new project that's designed that fits better with the Article 53 amendments that went into effect last week.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the mayor's office had to defer to the judgment of this board. Some back information on the community process. Owen Sosson at Butters Meeting for this project on November 30th of 2023. The applicant went on to meet with the Eagle Hill Civic Association, and that group voted to support the project in February of 2024. The vote of nine in favor and five opposed. Of that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
I have no way of answering.
Okay, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the applicant works with BPD to work within the height limit of thirty-five feet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
No, I prefer to know that it's compliant with the code and otherwise come back for reasons why it couldn't be. So my vote is no.
Thank you. Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have is BOA 151...
Thank you, everybody, for your time and effort.
We have case, next we have case BOA 1518102 with the address of 101 to 103 Rutherford Avenue. If the applicant's handler, their representative is present, they explain to the board first.
Yes, hello, everyone, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time today. My name is Christopher Robel, I'm a resident at 103 Rutherford Avenue, and I'll be speaking on behalf of Fabio Zilla, who is the person that submitted the appeal for this. He is one of our contractors working on this project. I'd like to quickly start by just giving a quick overview and timeline of sort of our, our process here and what we're trying to achieve. So our objective is to reconstruct our roof deck in the exact same footprint of the previous deck. In September of 2022, we re, we removed the existing roof deck and had it roof replaced. In May of '23, we filed our permit to reconstruct the roof deck, which was subsequently denied. Then we began the appeal process and started down that road. In March of '24, we held our community engagement meeting, which is a very, very positive meeting. And now that brings us to today, May of 2024, our zoning board appeals meeting. The files you should have on record should be a refusal letter, the architectural drawings for our new deck, the plans that you have in front of here, and then I believe you should have photos of the previous deck illustrating that it is in fact the exact same footprint as the proposed plans. That's a bit of an overview. Like I mentioned, we did hold our Butters Meeting with our community liaison, Sean Vereen. All the feedback that we received at that meeting was very positive. Everyone was in support of the reconstruction of the roof deck. And with that, I will pause and take any questions from the board.
Can we scroll to the second slide? I'm just trying to see where the actual image of the roof deck is, or maybe I'm dismissing it. Thank, thank you. Are there questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, a public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Vereen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And the Butters Meeting was held for 101 through 103 Washington Street, Wau, oh, sorry, 101, 103 Rutherford Ave, sorry about that. Back in March, since that time, this office has received no letters in support and none in opposition. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I think, I don't think we received everything that the applicant laid out. I only have the, what was shown on the screen, the two floor, two sheets of floor plans. They noticed the BPD recommendation is denial without prejudice, so they can resubmit with dimensional information relevant to roof structure restrictions and drawings that represent front and side elevations, as well as information on how it relates to the public realm. So I'm not sure the board, you know, if we want to defer to get that information, but I think we only received the two sheets.
Okay, any other questions?
I mean, I mean, the one question I would have is, you know, does the BPD support roof deck in this location? Because I think one can suggest that the project undergoes BPD design review. But I think the larger question is, because you can see how they're accessing the roof deck from an internal, I think they, they have kind of a head house already from the Google images. So I think the larger question would be for Jeff would be, does the BPD recommend roof, roof decks?
So, thank you, Ms. Bedebraza, Jeff Hampton, BPD. So, I don't think we're necessarily opposed to the roof decks, but without any sort of height or, what's the word I'm looking for? You know, vertical renderings of how high this, these decks go up and where they are on the deck measured from the roof. That, that, that was our concern a lot was that. You, we don't know if you can see it from the street or if it needs to be set back even further. So that, that was the reasoning behind it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I get it. Okay, that's great context for, for us.
May I offer a comment on that quickly?
Yeah, to confirm, you're rebuilding something ads is correct.
Exactly, yep, there's two points of access, it won't be visible from the street. It is compliant with all the zoning, but of course, it looks like you guys didn't actually receive the plans that we do have drawn up. So would it be possible to receive conditional approval based on that review of the plans?
Thank you, so if all of us are ready, we can make a motion. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that BPD determines the size and location of the roof deck.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, are you happy?
I will second, but could I add, you know, just a tweak that, you know, with consideration for how it appears from the public realm?
Right, that's where the BPD determines the location to make sure that it's not visible from public way?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Stunbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Yes.
Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much for your time today, everyone.
Next, we have four companion cases.
Are you recusing yourself, Ms. Bedebraza?
Yeah, I was just gonna let Mr. Stunbridge read it on the record.
Okay.
Recusing myself.
Those four cases are case BOA 1576379 with the address of 241 Geneva Avenue. Along with that, we have case BOA 1576378 with the address of 22 Unis Street. Then we have case BOA 1576380 with the address of 268 Geneva Avenue. Now, along with those, we have case BOA 1576381 with the address of 276 Geneva Avenue.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself on four cases, thank you.
Thank you. We are now a six-member board. Please proceed.
And with that, we will ask the applicant and or their representative to explain the case to the board.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Matt Ekel with Fletcher Tilton with a business address of 100 Franklin Street. With me this afternoon are Dwayne Boyce and Adler Bernadine from Norfolk Design and Construction, Chris Drew from 686 Architects, and Tiara Satchville from the Mayor's Office of Housing. I'm here before you this afternoon on behalf of the four companion cases that we just read into the record, all of which are part of Phase One of the Welcome Home Boston Initiative. Overall, the project includes four residential buildings across four sites, three in close proximity along Geneva Ave, being located at 241, 268, and 278 Geneva Ave, and a fourth site located at 22 Unis Street. Overall, the project proposes twenty-six total units, all which will be affordable homeownership units, with thirteen offered at eighty percent AMI and thirteen offered at a hundred percent AMI. All four of the lots have been owned by the city historically and are currently vacant and are located in three F5,000 zoning districts. Just to go through each lot and proposal briefly, 241 Geneva Ave, we're proposing a three-story building with six affordable units and four parking spaces. The floor plans for this, the basement would contain mechanical and sprinkler rooms, and then floors one through three will each contain two units per floor. In total, that would be three two-bedroom units and three three-bedroom units. Moving on to 268 Geneva Ave, we're proposing a four-story building with seven affordable units. The floor plans for this, the first floor would be essentially at grade. These, this side of Geneva Ave has a large topology of basically three and a half raised foundation or basement structures, so we are proposing four stories here. But our first floor would have mechanical room, sprinkler room, a trash room, and one unit. And then floors two through four would have two units per floor. 276 would be largely the same, 276 Geneva Ave, that is. We're proposing again a four-story building with seven affordable homeownership units. Similar layout and typology, the first floor would have a mechanical and sprinkler room, a trash room, and one residential unit. And then floors two through four would each have two units per floor. Finally, at 22 Unis Street, we're proposing a three-story building with six affordable units and three total parking spaces. This would contain a basement with mechanical and sprinkler rooms, as well as two units per floor for the first, second, and third floor. This project went through a community process during both the RFP and zoning process, and the team met multiple times with the Butters and the Greater Bowing Geneva Neighborhood Association. With that, I know there's four different sites and a lot of information. I'll pause and take any further questions on each building of the zoning that the board may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
For the various buildings and the, and the units, how would be the size of, number of bedrooms for the size of the units?
So for 241 Geneva, it is three two-bedroom units and three three-bedroom units. The square footage of the world is about eight hundred and forty-eight square feet for the two bedrooms, and about nine hundred and fifty-two for the three bedrooms. For 22 Unis, there'd be three two-bedroom units at about eight hundred and sixty-seven square feet, and three three-bedrooms at about nine hundred and thirty-six square feet. For 268 Geneva, there'd be four one-bedroom units at about five hundred and forty square feet to about seven hundred and eighty-four square feet. There would be three two-bedroom units at about seven hundred and twelve square feet. And lastly, 276 would be seven units, which would be three studio units at about four hundred and sixty-four square feet. There'd be one unit, I'm sorry, one one-bedroom unit at about six hundred and thirty-two square feet, and three two-bedroom units at about eight hundred and sixty-one, I'm sorry, eight hundred, six hundred and eighty-one square feet for the two bedrooms.
Okay, thank you. All right, other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to hear from Mayor Johnson, during the public comment period, just about, you know, consistency with the Welcome Home program and their review of this.
Thank you. With that, let's turn it over to public testimony.
Owen Essedick?
Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, we'd like to defer to the judge from the board. As you heard from the applicants for representation, they went through a lengthy MOH-led community process meeting with residents several times and soliciting their feedback. They also checked in Buffalo Civic, the Greater Bowden, Greater Bowden Geneva group, and presented what I'm, what I'm told is a positive community meeting. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Also, Will Wells' office?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I owe from Council Wells' office for all the reasons that were stated previously. The council likes it on record in support of...
Tiara?
Hi, my name is Tiara Satchville. I'm a housing development officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. This project involves the disposition of city-owned land associated with the Welcome Home Boston program, which is initiative to create affordable homeownership in the city of Boston. Norfolk Design and Construction is the designated developer for these sites. The project has gone through an extensive community process and has the full support of MOH.
Molly?
Thank you. Hi, good afternoon. I am a resident of number five, of Unis Street, and I also believe that I have on phone another resident of Unis Street at 12 and 14. I would like to read my letter of opposition to this project on, at 22 Unis Street only, specifically for the fact that lack of parking will be paramount, a situation that will be exacerbated on the small street due to another building project at 177-179 Bowden Street, currently in progress. That building, at the base of Unis Street, will have mixed-use space. Street cleaning prohibitions will demand residents park on inside streets. At present, Unis Street only has one-sided parking. Where would the influx of additional parked vehicles go? According to the notice that the proposed unit at 22 Unis Street, three-story residential building has three designated parking spots for six units. It is obviously clear the needs and concerns for visitors, residential parking of Butters through streets and handicap designated residents on Unis Street have not and possibly will not be met. In addition, both Unis Street and Endeavor Street, the next street over, lack cut sidewalks, further adding to foreseeable aforementioned problems and issues prohibiting the enjoyment of home and property use. There's an ongoing roading problem on these streets, possibly due in part to the home that is being, that is abandoned for several years at the corner of Bowden and Endeavor Street. And the roading problem has notably... And the roading problem has notably increased since the new construction digs in this area. All has been reported to inspectional services several times, but has not been addressed. The noise factor generated in this small densely populated area is already a concern for residents. I would like to also say that being a unit, being a resident of five Unis Street, this information in, in this construction project is all new information to us who actually live on the street and will have to deal with this ongoing problem. We have houses that, that are faded on, or that front door, Dever Street, but have parking in their yard for, on Unis Street. So when we have street cleaning, where are we gonna park? Where are our cars gonna go? If you open up the street, it becomes a roadway for people who are trying to avoid traffic on Bowden Street, which is a main thoroughfare. So all of these things are concern for the people who live actually on Unis Street. And then with the bus stops on the ends of both streets, that makes even less parking for anybody who needs to move their car late at night. There, we all work at various hours of the day, and so that's also an issue. And, and in my home alone, we have elderly and a blind person. So when we step off to our sidewalk, what happens is it puts, it poses a danger for those who live in the area or in the house.
You all set?
I am, yes.
Kevin?
Hi, yes, everyone. My name's Kevin Welton. I live on 42 Only Streets, so running up right to 22 Unis Street. And I am in opposition of this project specifically as well. Very much in agreement with what was just stated specifically around parking. I think this project would actually infringe on my current property, eliminating one of our parking spaces. I think McNeil Way is a private way that butts up to this that may be impacted as well, so very concerned about that. Noise is also a huge factor, and I'm afraid that additional residents and cut, having the street be more of a cut-through would be a concern. So I've lived in this building for seven years, six years now, and I'm extremely concerned that this will have a bad impact on the neighborhood.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands.
I'm not sure if this is for the applicant or MO, MOH, but does someone want to address the concerns on Unis Street?
Certainly, we, we understand and recognize the kind of tight constraints on Unis Street currently, and parking is always a concern. With this proposal, we were trying to balance providing some parking without overburdening the site. We have no inclination of turning this into a cut-through on, on either side of the street. We understand, or I've heard, there's roading problems. I, I believe this project will help improve that by going through some, some pest control process that's required by city when, when pulling a building permit. So I believe we can actually be of some assistance in terms of that current concern and ongoing concern, which seems to be kind of a street-wide and maybe neighbor-wide issue that, that we could, we could help with. But again, we, we felt the three parking spaces was a nice balance. As, as mentioned in some of the comments, we are, you know, directly adjacent to some bus stops and in close proximity to, to MBTA stations, so this will be kind of a mixture of private parking as well as transit-oriented development.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Green, what are the parking restrictions on Bowden Street? Do, do, is anyone on the proponents team know in terms of resident parking? I'm just not aware, or, you know, no, no parking, no parking times? Obviously, in the street, it's a small street, understand that. And not everyone can have parking, you know, in, in front of their door, so just trying to understand how Bowden serves that purpose.
Bowden does have parking on both sides of the street. There is street cleaning as well as some bus stops, which obviously take up some public on-street parking, but there is, there is parking on both sides of the street.
Yeah, understood that, okay.
I have a question, particularly with 22 Unis Street. So there's six units and three parking spaces. How, and how is the parking, is the parking assigned to units? You know, I know with affordable household, a car can be, you know, a huge asset, and I'm just wondering how it's decided what parking goes with which unit, if at all, or is it just first bump or serve?
Yeah, so they, they will be assigned, part of the homeownership benefit is that you kind of know what you're gonna get if, if and when you were to purchase one of the units, so you would know if you had it and it would be assigned. It wouldn't be a, a free-for-all. I'm not sure if the exact units which would have the parking space have been designated yet, or if that's still going through the process, but it'd be designed that they are attached to a unit.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebraza?
Please recuse, Madam Chair.
Oh, is that hard? Ms. Luwau?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes, I think these are appropriate developments under the Welcome Home Boston program.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.